Hi, good evening. It's Monday again, the fifteenth of March two thousand and twenty-one, and we're delighted tonight, Glasgow love to you, to be joined by councillor Susan Aitken, who is the leader of Glasgow City Council. She's an SNP councillor, pardon? Oh, sorry. I was going to say a little bit more about you. You were elected as SNP councillor for Langside, where you live, in two thousand and twelve, and you have previously been an expert spokesperson on health and social care. So I don't know if there'll be any questions around that later on. There are lots of things we could talk about tonight, but we're going to try and focus our conversation on the impact of Brexit and on our beloved city. And no doubt Covid will get mentioned as well because there are kind of crossovers or whatever between the two. Just a reminder to the folks out there that, as usual, we're a cross-party group. We're not talking party politics, we're not talking forthcoming elections. We're talking about Glasgow and Brexit at the moment. But if you have any questions at all, please do send them through via social media. We have Paul monitoring Facebook and Twitter. So anything that you bring up, we'll endeavour to put into the conversation. So we'll get into some specific areas later on. But first of all, from your perspective, how easy or otherwise, given what I just said a second ago, is it to differentiate the issues arising from Covid compared to the issues arising from Brexit and the impact they're having on yourself in the council?
Well, I mean, I think perhaps the best way to illustrate it is to say that before the pandemic hit us, we had regular meetings about Brexit, a Brexit preparation forum, which I chaired, which was the leaders of the other groups. And we would receive regular updates from officers. And there was an operational group of officers which met very regularly in the council and did a lot of planning and had a risk register. Now, we've combined that completely. And so there's a, we now have what we call the Recovery Programme Oversight Group, which is another, it is the leaders of all the groups. And we meet fortnightly and we receive the Brexit updates to that meeting. And so they are now more or less conjoined. There are some particular issues around Brexit that can be separated. Clearly, the issue of EU nationals and unsettled status. Although in actual fact, that seems to have largely gone pretty well in Glasgow. We don't have a huge number of EU citizens who are employees of the council, around a thousand or so. And a number of those are Irish nationals, so they have that slightly different status. But obviously, in the wider city, we have a very significant EU national population. And I think we did have concerns early on that a lot of people would either just leave or would really struggle with the settled status scheme. As it is, it seems that most people have applied and those who have applied have, by and large, their applications have been accepted. We do still have some concerns around older people who perhaps were born in the EU and have been in the UK for a long time and for whatever reason have never gone through a citizenship process, just because they didn't ever need to, by and large. We do have some concerns there that maybe some folk are slipping through the net. And our big worry is that people might end up actually with no recourse to public funds, which is a real concern. So we're keeping a close eye on that. And there are specific things around environmental health and trade and the kind of crossovers there where we have real challenges. Environmental health was one of those kind of traditional local authority professions, which actually for quite a long time had been, there weren't as many environmental health officers, people weren't going and training in it in the same way. And that's not unusual. You know, there are other eating leave and planning, building control, all those kinds of traditional professions. But all of a sudden, with the new rules that are in place, particularly for people who are exporting food, but not only, for a whole range of people, of businesses who are exporting and importing. Suddenly, we need environmental health officers and we don't have. And you know, you can't just knit an environmental health officer. These are highly trained people who have a qualification. So that's a real challenge and that's a challenge right across local government. But the big economic impacts, I think, are now more or less indivisible. It's hard to tell where one starts and the other begins, or one ends and the other begins, rather. And we're certainly treating them as a joint challenge. But certainly, the scale of the economic challenge and the employment challenge that Brexit, that we anticipated that Brexit would create, we haven't downgraded it in any way. We haven't, we're not saying, oh, you know, Brexit has peeled into insignificance in relation to the pandemic. It exacerbates the impact of the pandemic. It's a whole other layer of difficulty and challenge around our economic future that we face now.
Well, that's just about answered all my questions in one, pretty much. It was just a, I'm going to go back to EU citizens because I had a specific question on that, so I'll ask that now. And I was reading an article in The Guardian by Jonathan. So what I wondered was whether there was any data about the number of EU citizens who have actually left Glasgow.
Sorry, I missed, I missed you in the middle there. We lost you for a second, but I think I got the, I think I got the gist of it.
I got an unstable internet message.
Not yet. What we've got is primarily anecdotal, I think, for the city. I think the Scottish government has, is doing monitoring. It's quite a difficult thing to do because we don't ask people to identify themselves as EU citizens. You know, it's not when people are asked, when they start a job and they fill out maybe an equalities form. You know, EU citizen isn't a category, it's not a protected characteristic or anything like that. So it's not something that we've ever, when I say by we, I mean as a country. We don't ask people to provide us with that data because we have been part of, up until now, a European Union that allowed that exchange and that free movement. So there was never any need or any requirement. We didn't, you know, why would we have to know where someone's origin was within the EU? So I think there definitely is a challenge there. And it's, I think that kind of data is more likely to be collected on a national level. If there's any chance of accuracy there, perhaps using, and over time as well, using census data, for example.
Yes. I remember listening to a programme a few years ago and basically they were, it was a stats programme. I think it might be more or less pointing out that when people kept talking about net migration, they weren't actually, there were no actual statistics that were, you know, properly counting the number of people going out and the number of people coming in. So it's a little bit weird, really. Environmental health officers, that was interesting because obviously another area is vets. I suppose that's another shortage area. But traditionally, when we had labour shortages in that sort of way, we'd just kind of try and get them over from the EU, wouldn't we? But it's not going to be so easy anymore.
No, definitely not. And there are obviously sectors in Glasgow and indeed in Scotland, but which are perhaps particularly relevant for Glasgow, like the construction industry, for example, where EU nationals have been enormously important for, you know, at least the past decade. And we've got a huge amount of development and house building going on in Glasgow. A great big affordable homes programme and all sorts of, you know, all sorts of traditional kind of post-industrial land now being kind of reclaimed and remediated so that we can build and develop on it. There's creams up all over the city now. Obviously, they've been, the past year has slowed everything down on that front. But the plans are still in place. And I think the real concern now is that that kind of economic activity could be slowed down or even prevented or just things that should be happening just stop because we don't have the workforce, we don't have the skills that we would previously have. And that's a real concern. And I think that Glasgow, although everywhere will be affected by that to a greater or lesser degree, cities and the big population centres will be particularly impacted by those sectors who may well have lost chunks of their workforce and where it's been disguised by Covid. Because a lot of construction work either stopped or slowed down, that made enemy, it's back now. But it has been slower. I think construction will come back fairly soon. And it's possibly been masked, that loss of skills because the sector's been operating at a slower level anyway. So we may yet have, really have no real idea of what the impact is in areas like that. And then, you know, that's a direct knock-on effect. If we are not able to build the number of homes that we've, affordable homes that we've predicted to build, that has a direct impact on families, on young people, on people who experience homelessness, all sorts of things. So you can really see this kind of domino effect potentially kicking in as we emerge from the pandemic, as the economy starts to return to normal and we see where we've lost chunks of our workforce that we previously relied on. The hospitality sector, which will probably be one of the last to come back after Covid. Again, you know, they may well be hit by that, by the impact of that when they get to the point where they want the workforce to come back again.
Yeah, so I mean, yes, leisure and tourism was another of my questions. So they've, so that's a really difficult area where it's to disentangle the impact of Brexit in terms of what that potentially might have meant in terms of loss of visitors and so on, compared to Covid, which obviously has impacted the leisure and tourism, you know, absolutely decimated it basically for the last, pretty much the last year. I mean, I know it got back for a few months, but it's very difficult. I was trying to think, because my question on that was, is there anything that the council could do to help revitalise leisure and tourism once we're in a post-pandemic world of travel, whenever that might be? And I was thinking that, you know, I don't know, could you do anything to like encourage people to, you know, because they keep saying, there's all this pent-up demand and there's all these people with lots of money in their pockets and they want to go out and spend it, to encourage people to be a bit more generous with their tipping? For example, to give the actual restaurants and the people who work in them, you know, sort of little extra to say, thank you for being here and we're so grateful to have you back. I know that I'm being slightly flippant when I say that.
I don't think so. And I was going to say, I hadn't really thought of that. But actually, it's not a bad idea at all when we get to the point where that part of the economy opens up again or fully opens up, because it did partially, obviously in the summer, up until about November time. But yeah, I think we were running, we've got lots of plans for how we work with the council, kind of leaving, I suppose, but very much in partnership with businesses and with the Chamber of Commerce and people like that. We have really good, kind of well-developed and mature kind of economic ecosystems, if you like, in the city of really, really strong partnership working, which is good. And they're going to be more important than ever. We're going to need them more than ever. So we've got lots of ideas from, you know, things like, obviously, business rates relief to physical changes to the city centre and to other parts of the city where there is a lot of leisure and tourism, where that's particularly economically important. You know, to allow outdoor dining, for example. We've been doing stuff like that. We did a Glasgow's Open for Business campaign during that period where it was reopened again. I think we'll kick in on the marketing. We're looking at ideas of how we use empty buildings potentially. We've got particular concern about the city centre. The city centre, Glasgow city centre is the biggest concentration of economic activity anywhere in Scotland. Hundred and seventy thousand jobs, nowhere matches that. And we are really concerned about the future of city centres. So there's a lot of thinking and planning going on around that. But when it does come time to open up again, those relatively small things, I think, where we say to people, how much have you missed going out for a meal? You know, if you value it, then yeah, do that little bit extra, leave a decent tip. I literally have started dreaming about restaurants. I miss it so much. I mean, this is absolutely ridiculous, but it's, you know, it's a very minor thing. I'm very lucky to have not been hugely touched by the impact of Covid. And you know, my family haven't been touched by it. And, you know, to not be able to go to restaurants is the tiniest thing compared to what some people have suffered and have the legacy for a lot of families. But it is, it is those small things, I think, that are building up for a lot of people to just generally make them feel they're struggling a lot of the time. And obviously, a lot of folk have either lost their jobs or have their jobs under threat in these sectors. So yeah, little personal things like that that we can do to support the parts of the economy that we care about and that we want to be able to return again and that we value, I think, are going to be really important.
Yes, and our hairdressers too, when we can get to them.
Oh, gosh, yes. Yes. Nice and easy root touch-up has become my friend during this.
I think we might have a question or so on social media, Paul, if you want to pop in for a sec. I'm going to come back to skills and education a bit later on, but.
Yeah, so there's one question really about thinking about our relationships with other countries and specifically other cities across Europe and ways in which we might maintain those links now that Brexit's happened. So in particular, thinking about things like, well, obviously, twinning, but also EuroCities, European Week of Regions and Cities. So yeah, just wondered what can Glasgow City Council do in that area and what are you planning to do?
We are doing loads and all the kinds of things that you talk about, I think, are absolutely vital and really important. When we discovered, when we formed the administration in two thousand and seventeen, that the council's international strategy had run out in two thousand and twelve and it had never been replaced. And it was also kind of, it was, the version it had been was kind of very focused, I suppose, on kind of civic stuff. So it was a lot about charitable work in Malawi and stuff like that, which is important. But we felt, and it barely mentioned Europe at all. So we felt very strongly that we needed to be really politically forward-facing and saying, we are an international city, we are a global city, we are an open city. We want to be a global citizen and we are a European city. And we are absolutely open to EU nationals still to come and live and work in Glasgow. And we are actively saying to the EU nationals who are already here, please stay, please continue to make your home in Glasgow. So we wanted to really put the emphasis on that. So the council had been a member of EuroCities for quite some time. And there were some areas where there was some quite really good joint working. And in particular, Glasgow is seen as an exemplar among European peers for our work with the Roma community and the kind of the community cohesion and integration work that's been done there. And the officers who led on that did a lot of work in EuroCities. But it wasn't really something that was front and centre and we've really shifted that. So EuroCities is a key relationship for us now. Myself in particular, my deputy, David McDonald, who I think has done a session with you before, David leads on international relations. That's not what we'll call it in his title, but essentially that's what he is. And other colleagues have really built up relationships with EuroCities. What's been brilliant over the past six months in particular, six to eight months, and what gives Glasgow a reason, it gives us a reason to stand out in terms of those building relationships with international peer cities and European cities in particular, is COP twenty-six, of course.
You're answering all my questions before I've asked them again.
But it's been phenomenal, the relationships that we have built with cities in particular. You know, the opportunities that it gives us as a city is once in a generation. It is absolutely incredible, even in the circumstances that we're in in terms of Covid and the pandemic. COP twenty-six is phenomenal. But the sort of last six months, I've been doing a lot of outward-facing stuff, talking to the world about Glasgow. And that's allowed us to, again, really build on and cement some connections. But you talked about twinning and twinning has been really important for Glasgow for a long time. But what we've decided to do is a kind of another type of relationship with cities, which we're calling partnership cities. So it's more focused on policy and outcomes and working together and learning from each other, perhaps rather than the kind of civic connections that twinning is more focused on. So twinning continues and is still really important. But it's more of a policy, a collaboration, if you like, between cities. So we've got a number of early ones. And the big European one is Berlin, who we already had a number of, we had a relationship with the European Championships in two thousand and eighteen, which we jointly hosted with them. So we're building on that, turning that into a formal partnership. We're talking to a whole number of other European cities. Tallinn, for example, huge amount to learn from them about how they use open data, how they have a really massively digitised society in a way that supports public services and is really smart and forward-looking. Bilbao, another city like Glasgow with a post-industrial heritage, which has, you know, in common with us, has revitalised itself through culture and the arts, for example. So some really good relationships there that we want to take quite in a bit more depth. No, outside Europe as well, so Pittsburgh in the United States and Santiago and Chile are another early partnership cities that we've signed up with. But that's a kind of particular strand of joint working with peer cities that we want to develop and really use to the benefit of Glasgow. I think, you know, coming back to the context of Covid recovery, none of us can do this on our own. None of us can do it in a wee bubble. Collaboration's going to be absolutely essential and we're just cutting off our nose to spite our face if we don't look outwards to what others are doing and learn. And indeed, you know, in that spirit of sharing, they can learn from us as well, where we've done good things.
Yeah, I mean, you're absolutely right. And that, you know, that absolutely applies to the environment, which is the biggest existential problem for the whole planet. And COP twenty-six, hopefully, there'll be some good stuff come out of that for the whole world. And now, correct me if I'm wrong, so Tallinn is Estonia, isn't it? I just wanted to check before I said the wrong thing. So yeah, I mean, that sounds fascinating what's happened in Estonia. Have you watched Lesley Riddick's film yet? I haven't watched her film yet.
I haven't, or I haven't seen that.
She's always going on about Estonia and how brilliant it is and the Nordic countries. But no, that sounds really positive and really outward-looking, which is, I think, how we feel that Glasgow is and should be. And it just makes Brexit even more upsetting and painful to think about it. And, you know, anyway, right, I'm going to go back to education because that was another kind of key topic to talk about. You talked about it in terms of, like, oh, it's not me, my phone's gone. Construction, you're talking about construction, which obviously is kind of in further education, rather than higher education. And I think, I mean, I'm a relative newcomer to Glasgow and I'm not an expert in what's going on. But it seems that higher education, no, sorry, further education in particular, is the poor relation between schools and universities in a lot of ways. And, you know, it's never, I was a teacher, so I know that it was, it was, it was kind of, you know, we were always trying to push kids to university. Well, not me, but people were, rather than into what were considered sort of trades and, you know. So I don't know what we can do about that. And so that's one aspect.
I think that's changing a lot.
Good.
Because we do, I think there is a recognition that skills are incredibly important and colleges are where skills come from. You know, the colleges in Glasgow are, they deliver a lot of higher education as well. You know, they would describe themselves as higher as well as further education institutions. I think particularly the City of Glasgow College. And the City of Glasgow College, even just physically, because it sits there as part of that learning quarters, you know, we call it with Strathclyde, the college and Cali. It really, there is, it's got that opportunity to literally make the links between school and university. And I think there's a recognition nationally, certainly from the Scottish government and definitely in Glasgow, that we do need to have much more, a much more natural flow, perhaps, between college/university, school/university. And also that college isn't the poor relation, that skills and practical skills are absolutely essential. I think possibly there was maybe a decade or so ago when there was a real drive to get children and young people to, particularly to university. And of course, Scotland's rates of sending young people to university are absolutely phenomenal. And it's not that we don't want to do that, but there's quite a lot of graduate under-employment. You know, arguably, a lot of people are doing degrees and then not necessarily doing jobs. But now, you know, education isn't all about the work that you do at the end of it. Education isn't all about your earning power. But in the incredibly difficult economy that our young people are leaving school into, you know, the worst, probably in the post-war period, we do need to make sure that we are doing everything that we can to equip our young people to actually, you know, be able to create their own future and have the ability to do that. Different pathways to get them to where they need to be. And you can always go to university, you know, you don't have to go to university street. They're not going anywhere. Glasgow University has been there for hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of years. It's not going anywhere, neither are Strathclyde and Cali. So I think we are getting, we are getting better at that. And the economic situation that we're in now will concentrate minds around the need to get better still at that even more.
Yeah, I think Darren McGarvey went there and he went back there in his latest programme. Do you know Darren McGarvey, writer?
Yes, yep.
And that was fantastic because he, you know, that was life-changing for him. And he's such an interesting guy. I think he's very interesting. And I was never one of the, I always said to kids, because I did Open University as well, I always said to kids, education's always there. You don't have to go at eighteen. And actually, you get more out of it, to be honest, if you go a bit later. But while we're still on higher education, obviously, that's, the university sector is massively important to Glasgow. And from a report, it's, the stats are probably a wee bit out of date, but it was one that you commissioned at the time, fifteen thousand foreign students of whom six thousand four hundred are EU nationals and one thousand two hundred and thirty staff, because we also forget the staff as well. And sort of one of the key points was about Erasmus, which we were trying to stay in, which obviously we're not in anymore, and the research, the research side and the research money that we've always got in from EU research funding and Horizon twenty twenty and all of that. So losing all those amazing programmes that we were part of, we can't, they can't really be replicated in the same way. So kind of how can we, how can we work around this? How can we kind of mitigate it as we go forward, do you think?
I mean, I think, I hesitate to stray into this area too much. You know, it is enormously important and it's, you know, it's probably the particular economic strand that I missed out earlier when I was talking, is post-school education and our universities in particular. I think, you know, when Anton Mascatelli, we've got, you know, the principal of Glasgow University, who is one of the foremost commentators on Brexit and the economic impact and everything, I'm always a bit kind of like, oh, I'll just, I'll leave it up to him. I'm not sure we can replicate it. I think there is, it's, it's part of what the city is doing, the universities are doing as well, which is this, and started doing it before Brexit happened, long before Brexit happened, of making sure that we were cementing and building on existing relationships and reaching out and saying, we are still open and we still want to work with you and to have that exchange, albeit barriers have now been put up in the way and it makes it that bit harder. You know, having someone like Anton, who of course has a. And, you know, having someone like Anton, who, of course, has a a very strong and very proud EU heritage himself. And is eh I think eh that's that's been eh a real asset for for Glasgow. I think one of the key things is that cities and institutions like eh like universities, we're not constrained in the same way as national governments are. And because we don't have to worry about things like international diplomacy or anything like that, we we can just talk to each other. There's nothing to stop us talking to each other, Brexit or no Brexit. You know, we'll we'll talk to and work with any city that that we want to and that doesn't stand in our way. And so I think we we have to grasp every kind of route and opportunity to to bypass, if you like, and and or or go under or sneak sneak round Brexit and and try and eh get things done in some way, which which we are trying to do. But that it it doesn't eh that doesn't take away the challenge. There's no question that this is eh this is massive for our universities, absolutely massive. The eh that eh free exchange of eh of people and ideas that the European Union facilitated for so long and which has been particularly crucial eh in in Glasgow eh over the past eh twenty years or so, really, I think eh it it's is at risk. There's no question that it's at risk and and eh we we risk losing something not just eh economically important, but some culturally eh important, some, you know, something intangible that makes Glasgow what it is. That, you know, when when I'm having all these conversations with eh with peer cities abroad, it what's very clear is, I think we don't always appreciate it as much in Scotland. And that the view of why people come to Scotland is often about Edinburgh and the Highlands. And, you know, people that they come to Edinburgh for for the the history and, you know, and all the amazing things in Edinburgh and the sheer overwhelming natural beauty of of eh of rural Scotland and the Highlands in particular. But Glasgow is seen eh as kind of emblematic of the best of modern Scotland. And the transformation that's happened in Glasgow over the past three decades. And while still retaining that real kind of urban edge and vibrancy that the best cities in the world have. And and that people come to cities looking for. And that Glasgow is seen to embody that. Eh and and so if we lose part of that, we risk losing a part of all the progress that we've made in in building that eh reputation eh not not just globally, but for ourselves as well. You know, it's that old eh Alistair Gray thing from from Lanark about people who live in a city. Eh and until other, until they see it from the outside in, are able to see it from the outside in the, you know, it's eh they can't imaginatively inhabit the city or creatively inhabit the city in the same way. And that's been a spectacular change in Glasgow over the past few decades, which again, would be an enormous loss if we went even a bit backwards on that.
Well, we've got to strive to keep going forwards. I think that's the the main thing. I'm going to finish off in a second, but I think, Paul, there's another question to come in for Susan, if you've got that there.
Yes, there's a question, just going back to COP twenty six for for a minute. There's a question about what what you see as being the kind of lasting legacy of COP twenty six from Glasgow's point of view. And just more generally, what are you hoping to achieve from COP twenty six? Because it it does seem from the science as though there's a gap between policy and what's actually required eh in terms of how radical we need to be to deal with this. So, yeah, what do you see as the kind of legacy of that?
Okay, so I could be here all night, so I'll try and keep it as brief as possible. The legacy that we want eh from eh our immediate hosting of of COP twenty six is to and by the by the time people come for COP twenty six and and the negotiations themselves are going to be an in person event. And everything round about it may be much more hybrid, but the negotiations themselves will be an in person event. And that we have eh got some real concrete progress to demonstrate where Glasgow is in terms of our sustainability journey. And we were awarded the UN's Global Green City last year. And and, you know, a lot of people are slightly eyebrows raised at that, but we forget where Glasgow's come from and how challenging the journey has been. And a lot of Glasgow's progress has been literally been under the ground. It's been eh remediating post industrial vacant and derelict land. It's been remediating flood risk. And, you know, the city centre, while it's still got a long way to go, nonetheless, has been transformed. And so we are, we are already globally recognised as a as a leader in sustainability. And what we need to do, though, if we're going to meet our own sustainability targets, but most of all contribute to to Scotland's. And and, you know, I've been very clear that it's the the big population centres that need to lead the way on this. And otherwise, Scotland is not going to meet its targets of for twenty forty five and twenty fifty. And is is to take that big step forward on the pace and scale of change that's going to be required. And in terms of transformation, and that's transformation of the way that we heat our homes right across the city, it's transformation of the way that we move around the city. And it's it's transformation of how we eh of infrastructure and and the eh the impact that our infrastructure eh has on on how we move and and how how we eat things. And it's it's biodiversity, it's greening the city and and finding urban based nature solutions. And as an economic transition as well. And 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 we need to be very, very careful that that economic transition isn't regressive. And because everything's, everybody's doing all of this very fast, there is an inherent danger that it is regressive. And so we need to make sure that it's not. And so we are very conscious that we've got this window of this few months to talk to the world, to to investors, to patient capital, because this is going to be billions and billions and billions of pounds. This isn't something the council can do. You know, on our revenue grant or anything like our capital grant. No, we we need partners, we need serious partners to do this. And indeed, we're talking to other cities eh about how we can partner up with them to do, you know, joint bids eh for massive district heating systems, for example. And, you know, we we need to really scale this up. And so we want that legacy eh that is is a physical tangible legacy of significant progress towards eh our first of all, carbon neutral and then net zero target. And alongside that, we want the eh social equity element of that to be absolutely embedded right from the beginning, so that it's not something that we're tacking on afterwards, but that we do ensure that the transition is a progressive transition. And and finally, you know, for two reasons eh we need Glasgow and whatever comes out of COP twenty six, whether it's a Glasgow Agreement or a Glasgow Accord, whatever builds on on the Paris Agreement. And we don't have control over that as the whole city. That's up to nation states. Eh but we can certainly use our influence and push them as much as possible. And we we want eh because we are good global citizens and we are, you know, fully signed up to doing our bit for the planet. We want and need that to be eh the the agreement that the world needs, that the the planet needs for its future and particularly people living in countries who are suffering loss and damage from climate change right now. And we need that. But from a selfish point of view, I want the Glasgow Accord or whatever it is to be something that's worthy of the name of this great city. I don't want us to be associated with something that's rubbish for however long that is. So, and yes, that that's the legacy that I would want, is that when people hear the word Glasgow for eh however long, you know, decades to come, they think of eh not only a great city that hosted eh a fantastic and highly successful eh climate summit, International Climate Summit, but that it was a turning point for the world. And and it was it was the point where the world got his act together and got serious, truly serious about tackling eh the climate emergency. You know, I know it might sound a little bit grandiose, but that is literally what's at stake at COP twenty six and it's happening in our city. So and there's a lot at stake for us as well.
I think that's absolutely fantastic and I really don't want to ask you anything else because I want to leave on that on that thought because that is inspiring and it is, you know, looking forward to the future and 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 really, really putting Glasgow on the map as if as if it wasn't already. So no, that was that was really, really fantastic. And and, you know, I've I've applied to be a volunteer. Let's hope I get to get picked. Um so, yeah, we all hope it's really successful and and we all hope for a, you know, really good future for our wonderful city, which we all adore. And thank you so much for your time. I know you 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 probably zoomed out because you do it all day long, day in and day out. But thank you so much for giving us so much of your time tonight.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Bye.